Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for July ninth. Call the meeting in order, please join me in a place. Our payment of bills. General expended sixty-two thousand four hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents, highway two hundred and five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-five cents. Water fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, sewer sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Capital General seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty and Capital Water. Three thousand one hundred and fifty-five for a total of three hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and six dollars and thirty-one cents and Greg passed, I believe, did the bills, any questions?
No, all in good order.
I guess your largest highway bill was paving.
Yes.
Okay. Are you motion to? Pay the bills as presented?
I made that in a second.
Further discussion, all in favor? I oppose. Again, division reports, if they're not read here, they will be on the website for those that wish to. View those that are not covered here. We'll start with two point seven with the Conservation Advisory Council.
We have been busy. And first before I go into the report, I would like to announce that there will be a public meeting on August first here at seven P M. And I'm Jay Engineering. Our, the firm that we hired to assist with this project will be here to answer questions and do a presentation. But I thought that I would give a quick update of what has happened thus far with the project. The project kicked off in April. Of this year, this, the stovetop and food. So that you know, a revised natural resources inventory, so it's revised because we had one. As well as open space and recreation plan. Bimonthly meetings with the Conservation Advisory Council were held in April and June. MJ's team site visit and town tour was performed in May. Project website, so there is a website. That you can get to about this project and it's Tustin Open Space Recreation dot com. And Crystal, can you put a link on? On our website, okay? The decision was made to have public engagement plan. Developed and it'll include three public meetings, community visioning survey and the plan will be posted on the website. Mapping is in progress. And again, April, August first at seven. To P M right here and then it'll be, it'll have map, it'll have a lot, I think you should come because it's gonna be interesting. Now, in response to inquiries related to the potential acquisition of the Boy Scout plans. We've contacted the D E C representative Evan Mastin, who's a pastor for D E C. And he has been in touch with us, so we have been in touch with him. And then our C I C member Kathleen Bream, who's not here, I don't think, but she forwarded us. Something from the Conservation Fund, the people who own the property name. And it was a press release that summarized the fund's role. In the acquisition of the former Boy Scout plans. And it provided a contact person, et cetera, et cetera. So now our whole project is group is going to contact them so that we're all working. Together instead of. For us. It's really an interesting project. So I really hope that you will come out.
Want any, any idea what your other public?
I know, I think we'll, we have to develop a survey. A survey will be developed similar to what taxpayers received when we did the comprehensive plan. So you'll receive it in the mail or you can respond online. You'll have that opportunity, so that has to be done, so I imagine there'll be one after the survey. One before the survey. Et cetera, et cetera. But it's really moving along and here I did bring, and this isn't in color, but this is what's on the website now, it really is a website. I'll pass that to. I don't know, for those. To Crystal, so it's a reminder.
You slide that mic there, my phone for Kate, please.
Yeah, they're growing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like to segue into grants?
Yeah, what happened to it? I have one here, a whole report.
It's down there, page five bottom.
It's on, it's on our. Oh. Maybe it's. Hold on, grants. Okay, the water infrastructure project, the project continues to be coordinated by Delaware Engineering. And I think that Kevin will give us an update and we have news there, so that's all good. Moving along, the U D C, U D C, I'm planning with the board's permission. Maybe we have to get that permission today. To submit a grant for year two of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. The National Fish and Wildlife work continues, see the C I C recording. The T-Mobile Grant that you gave me permission to submit. For fifty thousand dollars, town home renovations upgrades was submitted on time and the award which was just. July first and the awards will be announced next month, so that's a quick turnaround time. And if you are awarded, which again, it's a million people, this is a U S for our submission. But if we are awarded, the money will come forth in September, so that's pretty nice. That's that, any questions from the board?
I don't have any. You don't have any? If not, your water sewer?
Water sewer, the biggest headline to come out of water sewer, we actually have this morning, where we had a conference call with R cap. About applying for. USDA money. To supplement the, the grant we've already received. And pay for expenses of increase exponentially since COVID and everything. And. We learned that the. USDA grant can be applied for without an income survey. But that it needs to be sort of translated into a new format. And Delaware Engineering needs to do that and you spoke with Delaware Engineering today?
Yes, well. You know, Delaware Engineering, they responded, we gave them a couple hours notice, it's in town.
They picked up your call.
Yeah, they're so good, they're so good, but. The issue is, as Kevin just stated, the whole P E R, which is the preliminary engineering report, has to be. Turned around into a different format for the USDA grant versus New York State grants. So Dave wanted to speak with Becky before he could give us a, an estimate. And he said if the application process involves a new schedule. Cost estimate, minor engineering report amendment and work to fill out the two forms that Becky told us are required. Including data reduction of more recent water usage and billing information to recalculate the E D Us. Dave estimates the cost will be between five and ten thousand. If. In addition to the tasks listed above. An entirely new engineering report is required with potential increase or changes to the score. The cost is estimated to be twenty-five to thirty thousand.
That's a little low.
Well, yeah, but I don't think that that'll happen anyway, I think. I mean, that's a lot in that first five to ten thousand and then the USDA again, for those board members that are on the line. But we are in a REAP zone, a REAP zone is just several zones, I think four or five in the country. And it gives us. A little extra benefit. With the USDA, I, I kind of think of it, if you go for a job. And you're a veteran, you get an extra benefit, this is kind of similar to that, but. In addition to that, there is special money in the USDA set aside just for REAP zones. So if we can, and Liberty has found some, a lot, I think.
It's for the village.
Most of the village.
And also she said that. The USDA awards grants sort of based on, or I think, tell me if I'm wrong. Based on the size of the district and the ability of the rate payers to. Pay for, you know, so that they'll. They're good, it's almost like you're in your college of financial aid, you may get a grant, but you also may have access to very low interest loans as well.
Right, and the low interest loan right now.
Two, seven, five.
With USDA, I don't know. What everything else. So anyway, so the other thing is. As Kevin mentioned is we talked to. Our cap about doing an income survey. And the income survey would allow us, we're okay, our numbers as they stand now with our census block. Allows us to apply with USDA, but it does not allow us to apply for a C D B G grant. Community Development Block. And that, we're just on the plus, so if we did an income survey, maybe we would. Qualify for a grant there.
And, and again, forgive me, but some of the thinking is that. You do an income survey, and this is only within the water sewer district. That commercial apartments and Airbnbs aren't counted.
And part timers.
And part timers aren't counted, so there's a thinking that that may. Result in a lower. Income, you know, a lower meaning.
Also, so that's that subject, but we also, or I also. Asked Delaware Engineering to update with me or us on where Albany is with our water shower. He spoke with Versage with the, at the E F C. And got an update from him, he says that the E F C loan board did approve the loan portion of the project, so whatever the power. This means that the next step should be to close on a P F A, what was the P F A? Something Finance. The E F C's target. Bravo. E F C's target date for closing is August eighth. Someone from the E F C Finance Department should be reaching out to the town. In late July or early August to facilitate this, so Crystal and Ben, be aware. Following this step, I believe the town should be able to assess grants and loan sponsors should be able to seek reimbursement for past.
Will I send him the email?
Probably. And maybe. Maybe Joe would be copied and Joe would also. But then you can seek reimbursement for past expenses, which we have a lot of. So that'd be good.
I would keep the bookkeeper happy.
Gotta keep the reference, I don't know if you want that reference. Okay. What am I doing? Did I finish?
I think you're finished.
Okay, I'm finished.
Um, do we have a context of what size grant we could apply for with the USDA?
Yeah, um. No, I don't know. I don't know, again, there, once we get that far. Once we get that far, that close with the paper in hand, we'll contact them and ask them how much money is available in the pot. What do they think we can go for and go from then?
Thank you.
Okay.
Kevin? I'm just, I just think that Joe and Becky both would encourage us to pursue a five thousand dollar expense. For a twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, I'm just saying, I think that they're. Where that this is gonna be six-figureish with them. At least. But that's, are they going to need from us approval to?
Yeah, well, the other thing is, we, we, our cap will do the grant application at no cost. However, they need the information from Delaware Engineering. So that is really quite. On the cap, our cap for the public is, so that you know, it stands for rural something or other, but it's funded. Basically by the US government and it's free to rural areas to help them with. Infrastructure projects, water sewer.
Becky was here last summer to, to the sewer red.
They've been wonderful.
It's a shame that the state and the federal government need different format. I know, one was in grief and it needs to be translated into Latin.
Probably true.
Just so, do we need them? We?
I'll do one or two business, I'll make a whole. Do you wanna do like a not to exceed?
Do you have more from water sewer?
Water's good.
You're good?
Yes, okay.
Uh, Tustin, you?
So July sheaping up to be at normal leave of the month for us, so we're usually kind of died down, people are vacationing. Something new we're doing this year, we're partnering with Chi-Hive, Susan is working with us, they offer a summer camp on Mendoza Farm on Bonne Hagen Road. And for the first time, we are helping to send up to fifteen kids a week to summer camp for two weeks. So this is the first time we're doing it, kind of our first trial. It seems to be successful starting next week, so once we get feedback, we know it's going. We may be applying for more funding and grants to expand this program next year. Hopefully that's gonna be successful. This coming Sunday, we have an event at the Carousel in Beach Lake, registration closes tomorrow, hope anyone's interested. Tustin U is free, of course, but we have a great group break, often to open to everybody, so just reach out to Crystal, I, or Jocelyn and get that information too. Also, starting tomorrow is Wednesday, we're working with the Tustin Social again and we're bringing back Tustin Club for summer sessions, it was hugely successful. In the fall winter, so we're working with Heather Lockwood, she has Lockwood Studios in Calico, really amazing. She's worked with us before, but now she's running this program, we hired her directly. And everyone's way down here, pre-registered basis, but it's open to all kids, you don't have to be Tustin. We just have a registration form and liability forms and whatnot, it is limited though, so we do encourage you to reach out as soon as you can. Something new, we're bringing it back, but it's new as we're working with the Tustin Social on this, it's called Unplugged. So we're not only doing Wednesday program, we're doing Saturday program for the summer too, this will be down on the ball, feel the. We've hired, I'm gonna murder her last name, Jackie and Adam and Walton.
No, it's beautiful.
Jackie Ruffey, to anyone who grew up here. They are doing organized sports with the kids, they have a whole itinerary, each week is something different, fun and organized, as well as open play on playground, basketball, snack, all that fun stuff. So both these programs start this week and they run to the end of August, so. Hopefully it'll be interesting to see the summer turnout we get. Just today, developing, so I don't have dates and times and details yet, but it'll be posted on social media soon. We're working with Blue Fox, they are offering us a Sunday pool party, as a fundraiser. So that will be coming probably mid to end of July and suggested remuneration, sure it is all about helping the kids and wanting to get back, so that's a fun opportunity for us, we've never done that before. I met with John Conway of the Delaware Company over at the fort. They are doing Christian kids, day camp again, we worked with them last year to do that. This year, however, they received enough funding from the county and the state that they're offering this program for free. He is able to take up to twenty-five kids, it'll be every Thursday starting mid to late July. We were gonna help offset that cost because we received a grant that I put in for museum and cultural events. However, we are now taking. Children. There are a lot of kids in our community and if you know of anybody or your children or brands, whatever. Have started to want to volunteer at Fort Delaware, they got a taste of this day camp last year. And they didn't wanna leave and it was a little overwhelming for them and so Crystal and I kind of stepped up and helped out and we would go. And give the kids things to do and we see a need because they don't have clothes to wear and the Delaware Company only has so much outfit and somebody funding for their staff. We're gonna take these funds and maybe talk to you a little bit about sewing clothing for the local children who volunteer at Fort Delaware. Jane didn't know that. But you did a last year for us. You did so good last year for our kids. So anyway, we're kind of excited to help Delaware Company grow their volunteer base. Because getting nine, ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds in now, in a few years, this is their employee base, when every fourteen-year-old wants to all work at the fort. That's how John is looking at this, so he's very open to these kids coming and learning skills and people and all the good things. And also very exciting, we have confirmed that. October nineteenth, that's Saturday, will be Tustin U Halloween Haunted House at Fort Delaware again. So it's probably, we're looking at like every other year because it's a huge undertaking to do this. They actually moved their haunted history lantern tour to a different date to accommodate this, so they're all in, this is awesome. So we need volunteers, if anyone loves being spooky and getting artsy and scaring people, right? We need volunteers.
I, I did it last year as a, like a belligerent clown and it was so new. It's really fun to have permission to scare children.
That's it, busy month for July, he was like. Oh, Martin, people are big, yeah. Yeah, it was fun. All right, thank you.
I'm looking at your little thing. Point twelve, our public spaces. And old business three point two going to merge together.
We had a very productive meeting yesterday for park and public spaces, we touched base with near the birdification on the status. Of several projects, we decided that we are reaching out to highway department. After inspecting the basketball court, we saw there is a crack through the middle and Bennett approached them and we started discussions about that getting. Taken care of, ensuring that it's leveled and resurfaced so that we can put down new basketball and pickleball boundaries. Off of the net that is already there, the portalets have been delivered and are in working order and I was excited to see that a motion light. God, we, we lost the motion lights when we took out the community garden area. And they are now back, but they are on the other side of the park, which I think is a wonderful choice because it's much further from the street lighting that we already had in that area. We are going to. Look into costs for sycamore trees, in part to get a little more shade in the area. Jane did a nice study for us to find out which ones would provide. The lowest maintenance impactful shade with quick growing trees that are not prone to. Disease and that's the one we have settled on, I did research price today. But of course, that does not include them being planted, which would be part of. The overall cost. We have had discussion, evidently there's been a trip to the quarry and the path will hopefully be moving forward with that. And we talked a lot about sign recommendation. And how those will be written, one member of the committee with initials J L was a little unreasonable, but other than that, it's very well. So we have the final wording in a lot of categories for that and we got approval for the Bruce Denny. Memorial signage, which will be part of the sports court in the park, making good on. A promise was made a long time ago, so I think we all feel very good about that moving forward. And we had some public comment, all of which is in the notes, discussion about parking concerns over the Fourth of July. And some deck activity and. As part of today's program, we're going to hear about the landscaping, the thinking on the landscaping for Little Lake Erie from the beautification group. And we thought we'd do that now in conjunction with the parks report.
It's parks and public space.
What did I?
Parks and public spaces.
My name is Leon.
You need to speak up, please, walk into the mic.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
My name is Leon Batte and I'm. Landscape but governor and also as the owner of Main Street. Been part of the education for now officially. Two, three years now and it's such an amazing group, I'm so happy. And I'm glad to be part of. Brings a lot of. How many people volunteer already now? So a couple years. Enabled mine, who is Aaron McIntyre, for those who know him, lives on Pauline Road, he made, we've been talking about doing some kind of work. And later on, we discussed, maybe we should, you know, do some, it is, there are some trees that have been there. And most of them are dying out. And which brings me to that, I don't know how to, you know, we can trim them, Kevin knows, who's also my neighbor. And then later on, we decided, Aaron and I, it's kind of like. I spoke to the group first of all and there was. One, yes, okay, and then she was like, oh, just put up something and then we can present it to the group and then take it from there. Which indeed, and I helped Mark and Aaron and I put up the drawings. And then I submitted them to their, to their group, which the group submitted to the town, leave place somewhere. So the kind of trees that we've decided to do, I don't know, we sat down both of us and thinking, what are the benefits of these trees to the community, not the community, but. The wildlife and to the viewers, the people who, you know, just come and visited and little walk. And we chose about, I was just gonna look again. We chose about maybe five different types of trees and the way we placed them, I believe they will not bother nobody. It won't be in a view, but there won't be trees that are growing to cover up anyone's view from their homes, our neighbors, they'll even that tree. And. I wish I could show them up here, although it's sort of seeing it, I do have a couple. Cherry blossoms, crab apples, red bats, we have dog woods. And the willows that really love the water, which are kindly going to the end of the other side and we have some maple trees as well. I believe all these kinds of trees that we decided, I don't know. Adding into that property or area. Are pretty beneficial in a way of like not only to us, but you know, some of them are pollinators that bloom like. All you in the sun in the spring, which is needed for. Like the bees when they wake up once, when it's kind of like pulling down the crab apples, cherry blossoms, those are pretty. Good trees that come like, you know, just not only pollination, but also the beautification of the area. And the maples, both I know, they do really look pretty good in all seasons. The willows are also pretty good, shows us for birds, you know, the bees also. Come around and the dog woods also are pretty good blooming trees in summer, in the springs, into the summer. So that's the kind of, you know, you know, kind of trees that children to use. And I know their roots are not gonna be bothering the tree, according to the map and the drawings that we were sending them. I don't see any roots or growth that is gonna be affecting any home or the road. And then I, I mean, you, I mean, if I'm, that's why I was like, I wish I could see that image if you have seen it, guys. The centering and how we're gonna do it, it's it's off the road, it's not in the road, it's not. It's not gonna be affecting any, any electricity line, number one, not being in a view of uh uh the neighbors. And some of them that we placed that might be alternating with the homes, they're slow growers. It won't just come like in two years, you find a huge trees. And if anybody has any questions about that, I'm available, you know, by email. Or if it doesn't have anything else to ask about, I can happy to talk about it.
I I do have one, could you define the the that area that you are looking at?
So the area is.
Are you able to email that to me?
Yes, okay.
If Chris, Chris still can put it up.
He's gonna email.
The also area that I don't work to do is just from, so we have um. About maybe five houses or six houses, one side was brown, was on the left-hand side of the bank of the Erie. Then opposite brown that's uh managed. And then there's right, there's Russell and Macher, there's uh Tony and Linda, then it's May next. And then there's um the Taylor family. And then it ends up through the big house that used to be in Edline. Those are the homes and so the trees are gonna be opposite by the side of the lake. So they're not gonna be on the other side of where the house is next here.
And you don't think it'll block their, the homeowner's view?
No, the way I see it, the kind of trees that are growing, like the ones that might be in France or inside. Or kind of like almost opposite the houses, they're really slow growers and they don't grow too big. It takes like less than a crab apple, Kevin has a crab apple next to his, you know, right in front of the. It takes years for them to.
I think twenty-five years. Yeah, well, it's considerably tall. I I almost feel, you know, I have to recuse myself because you're building my view. I feel like I have a conflict of interest, but my my concern is for you are the power lines. And what Nisek could just come in there and.
I I think out of all the trees, the only one that I would show concern would be the willow tree. Only because they are a faster growing tree and they're not always healthy trees.
Right, that would, I would run the willow idea also, but maybe that dawn. Because is he, I'm sure he has experience, you know, instead of change our roots and roads, you know.
And he do, the willows do have quite a root system. Is word line.
That's, yeah, willows love bikes. And I got.
You're gonna attract a lot of deer to crab apple.
That'll be good for the flash.
That's my, my concern is more of the heartache, when you put up a beautiful tree, yeah, and Nisek just comes in and.
Uh that, I mean, I know about that and uh how, I think I'm, I'm gonna have a lot of dogs. Out of the nervous reputation are gonna come and help when we build a plant. But I'm following uh the Ash trees, I think they have black walnuts that were planted. All you're there that I've been there and then some of them are dying out, so I'm following that, that's the way to be located.
Can you see on this side?
Is it possible to see a schematic?
And you're doing this kind of like erosion. Is that what you're doing?
Leon, is this for erosion purposes or?
Uh one of them is erosion, but also uh on the other hand. I mean, trees play a big role in our community, it's not only planted only, but erosion of shade or. Um but one of them is erosion is and uh.
I I'm just wondering why you chose trees versus shrubs.
Shrubs uh on the other hand, shrubs, we have a good number here. And you have to be maintaining them compared to how weeding and you know. I think uh trees will take up less responsibility compared to shrubs. Yeah, less maintenance.
Can you, can you let us know how trees get, because they're different trees, so maturity.
So this is uh what I'm kind of like showing, if you could take a look, if you can look at. These are their names. And if you take a look and do the, okay, let's say a maple tree. Uh cherry blossoms, I'll only be get, I'll probably be get. So that's. The size that I was lying this one out, I don't know for sure. And the ones that I know that grows older, like the maple tree, this is where they are. The area is actually stretched in front. I know that. And it grows way earlier than that. And then a forty there, I think that's a smaller tree.
So when you're looking at the table, it seems that that maturity is being transformed, they're simply going to around five, sixteen. So your dimensions right now, let's say for the first one is in sixty-nine height. So it's six to six to nine. Six to nine.
Six to nine, you know, without there being nine, uh six, nine, eight tree at a price.
My original question was.
But at the rate at which they grow, it's pretty slow, the ones that are gonna be right in front of anyone in town, so I see what over here, right, this is your home. This is your home right here, so this is uh probably not even safe. And it's not openly viewed. Right, it's a little industry. Low key, you either would like right again and compare. So that's why that is open and these are walking in ready. Go to Kevin and Jerry and leave where you're. No house, he's not moving, you know.
Supervised. My last open up, uh just I have a question as opposed to waiting for public comment. Okay, great. Okay, we all know that there is a public fishing spot. And that's basically what the stairwell is in the benches, the lions put that there probably about thirty-five years. And people fish there. So I think my wife had brought that up, that our concern was that if you plant a tree where people are cast in a war. You can't really fish in. And the idea was, my understanding, going back thirty, thirty-five years, when the lions probably put the benches in. They've been there for a very long time and that stairwell that goes down to pond. Was for a public spot, whether you were sitting down there and reading, but a lot of people fished it. And I just wanna drop, I'll drop, I'll drop this one, so the board can take a look at it. That overture.
Marker that's between CF and M A L.
That there and then you have a bench to the right, the bench to the left. And. Photograph that's taken over time. Like people that basically, whether they're tourists, whether they're second homeowners, whether they're people that just live in Narasburg. They wanna go fishing because there are fish in that pond. Less now because it was renovated last year, it was drained. But the thing is, it's a public fishing area and what makes it unusual for this town is to have a. Public body of water right in the middle, but you know, I mean, there's a lot of history behind it. Erie Railroad.
So your concern, Tony, then is that some of the trees.
Most of the casting, right, so right.
But the other trees are okay, you're just worried of the ones that are within the.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, if you look at a topo map from Google, you'll see that in front of this gentleman's house. The land shuts out, there's a tremendous amount of land that goes into the water all the way down to Taylor's house. So there's plenty of land to put trees there, I'm not sure whether, I think that's a few too many. I understand his point, but at the same time, you still have a very nice area there that's open to the public to fish.
How many feet you roughly feel that that is?
I know, I've just been along the shoreline and you would, you would think. You know, fifty feet, seventy-five. I I just, I just leave you to, you know, to to look at it, you know, and make your decision. Okay, since, yeah, this is what I'm. Thank you, Jadece. And then you can read the, if you go to Google Maps, you can basically look for yourself.
Might have like, like side yards, you know, uh. Area that you wanna keep clear of the tree, you know, you're, you're ten feet from the bench.
Right.
On right and left and that may keep people from tangling.
Right, I mean, look, uh you, my background is a fishing guide, I love this river. I, this river's been very, very good to me for forty years, I never expected when I got up in the city to become a fishing guide. And if you can have recreation and uh introduce people to fishing. And because we're lucky to have that body of water in the middle of town, you never know where it will lead to. So all I'm saying is, don't put a tree right next to a uh place where people fish.
I believe the trees are right there right now, pardon that I'm dying, they've been trees in the scenario right there.
Not close to where we're talking about, if we can walk there to.
Where we're talking about right away than a tree is. It's a bushy, weedy area that nobody goes. Well, I see the people who fish in front of our house, they are trees and shrubs, they still fish.
Yeah, I think, I think we've got enough information, I need to. Give it to the committee to.
I'm kind of curious. Who's gonna cut the grass and keep the weeds and grass?
We already do.
Yeah, now you got enough.
It's a weed whacker job, right?
Yeah, it's not the whole, it's not all the way up to uh the Pauline Road. It's not, it's not really creating anything more in a way of work, it's creating more aesthetics.
I just wanted to make a comment that um this whole project is uh greater than the scope of the now. Our thought was dividend phases, so we do have to sort of, if it gets improved. Figure out how to phase it over.
So can we get representatives from NVG to the next parks meeting on August fifth? And um I'll speak for myself, I'll go down and walk the area with the documentation things and we'll have feedback for you then. Awesome, yeah, thank you. Yes, August fifth at five.
Leon, thank, thank you for talking.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, um.
Wait, did he say it was finished?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Um I just noticed something was on your report.
Uh huh.
I don't think we agreed on Tustin path, I think we agreed on Tustin walking back.
I got overzealous, thank you. I was told to cut words and I got a big old scissors out.
Um I did not have the purpose on the agenda, but I will open public comment. This public comment will be for agenda only, and we're gonna go back to the way we kind of started, this is for your comments, not a dialogue. I will open it to Zoom first.
Hi, this is Kathleen Breen. Can you hear me? Hello? Hi, it's Kathleen Breen, um I I thanks so much, Jane, for that update on the C H C meeting. Just so you know that August first is also the U D C meeting. And they park their cars in that um parking lot there as well, just um it's the same time, seven o'clock. On August first, they meet the first Thursday.
Right, and that's probably, no, that's not sufficient. Okay, but I I don't think that's, yeah, we should be okay.
Okay, just wanted to let you know.
Again, Kathleen, for uh that spotting of that report from the conservation.
Oh, no problem. Thanks, guys.
Open up the floor, yes, Michael. To a point referenced earlier and we discussed it last night, uh. We are now facing the parking apocalypse. Uh we knew it was all coming, but Main Street now, uh with the opening of the Rat Funties Building. Uh is largely detachable during parts of the weekend. You can't get two cars up and down the street at the same time with everybody parked on both sides. If somebody double parked, we have a crisis, a truck makes a delivery, we have an even bigger crisis. Uh I appreciate that there's not a lot to be done and I know Kevin and Bruce from the past went back and relined the spaces on top. Uh I would suggest to the board that you might wanna reconsider reactivating the parking committee. Fact, we kind of look at this as an unfold, come up with possibly some suggestions or ideas as to what could be done. Decrease the traffic flow, make it all work better, make it work better for the merchants, make it better for the visitors to come to town. Uh I will just offer one suggestion at this point, because it just don't wanna complain, I mean, that's been known to do that. Um that uh perhaps an additional sign might be helpful. To indicate to visitors that there is additional parking up Bridge Street. If you come to town and find that it's completely jammed right down on Main. Parking lot right here uh is often, especially at night, empty. Uh that real, we would have to guide them as to where exactly you have to go. But we do have additional parking available, it's just not obviously right on Main Street where everybody really wants to be. But I would suggest if parking committee could be reactivated, perhaps either the kinds of things that could be considered, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Colin from the floor, yes, Star.
My name is Star Hesse and I just wanted to make a few comments on some of the points that were brought up at the meeting tonight. And one other clarification from last meeting. Um I am again raising the question about why town is paying for inoperative lights. Or and also why those lights have not been repaired under the contractual requirement of.
This is for the agenda items only, you can bring up any other public.
This needs to be cleared up because the comment that was made was that Charles Herman of NIPA. Had dealt with both these issues and he did not, if you read the email that he sent, what he said was. That LED lights use less energy, not that the town was not still paying electric charges for inoperative or missing lights. I just wanted to make that point. Um how can the town authorize paying for ongoing costs on the pavilion? When that project has not even been approved as far as I know. This is a lot of money and we don't even know if this is going to be built. And yet it seems to be, this is just steamrolling, falls be ahead. And just like the trees that were removed for shade purposes, you can't undo some things. So I would just like to say, the town should not be doing anything more. Paying for looking at anything until they get an estimate at least of how much this pavilion. of how much this pavilion, with the required A D A bathroom, is going to cost the town. That alone might make it unfeasible. Um, speaking of the pavilion and the A D A toilets, um, I spoke to several people at the last meeting where it was implied that there were businesses on Main Street that would let people use their facilities and therefore there was no need for a public toilet on Main Street. Together, all of them, without exception, adamantly denied that they would allow access to their property for the use of anyone but people that were in their facility and spending money there. They were categorically uniformly uh against that. They also brought up a good point, which was that since the town is now charging quite a bit more for the sewer and water tax, who is going to reimburse these businesses for all the people coming in using facilities and using much more water than they normally would? Okay, um. I understand there were two other issues that were brought up before. And I would just like to emphasize, we do need a public toilet on Main Street and that could not be dismissed or just overridden by someone else's site. That it's better to have two on the flats than anything on Main Street, which is a higher gravity area. The two issues I wanted to ask about, I understand the board has been contacted one time, at least quite a while ago, about the town hall A D A uh entry door being broken or needing repair. The man who made this complaint says that, said that he's never gotten any response on that. And he's also since died. So for him, this is a moot issue. But for the rest of us, an A D A compliant door is just as important as an A D A compliant toilet. So that really ought to be looked into and we have to get an estimate of when this is going to be fixed. The other thing was, um, it was a question about a retail venture being carried on on the uh town deck over the Fourth of July weekend. And the question was, was how is this authorized? Since this is a public place and it shouldn't be used for a personal uh game. So ha- has that been addressed or that issue been uh looked at?
It has, and we're not getting into the dialogue. And Star, I would ask you to keep your comments on this particular period to the agenda.
Okay.
At our final public comment, you can go into whatever you want. But out of respect for the people that are here and a time limit, I would please have me follow what I've asked.
There were many of the issues that I spoke about that were included in the agenda. So that's not about criticism, so I'm concerned. The last thing I would like to do is just say thank you to whoever it was who put out the expanded um uh agenda this time with much more details. It was very helpful and I appreciate that stuff.
Is there anybody else from the floor who'd like to comment on any agenda this? Not, I will move into old business. Uh, three point one sixteen five three, this is uh the property that was at the highway facility. Um, I've been notified by the Realtor that they were not willing to wait for the appraisal, so they've accepted and got into contract.
They just watched.
They did not want to wait for the appraisal to come in, so they got into contract.
Next one is the highway.
Right, yeah. It's all the good stuff, man. Yeah. Uh, three point two, we've taken care of. Uh, three point three, the pavilion, the work-based learning program agreement has been given to the town attorney for review. Uh, the job corps has received copies of the pavilion plans and are working on the materials list. We are still compiling books for concrete.
As the material.
So that's where that sits at this point.
I didn't know that they could um do the um materials list, so this is good for the other grant.
Yes. Um, so we'll be waiting that. Is there any other old business that I missed? Okay, under new business, um, a resolution to have the deputy supervisor submit a grant to the U D C for year two of the open space recreation. Do that in the form of a motion, although that, motion in a second. Uh, further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Uh, number two, it is union contract time for the highway. Um, Kevin here on the highway committee, I believe, would you like to work with me on that?
Sure.
It's a thrilling, stimulating, good time.
Educational, I'm sure.
It will. And then we will report back to the board on how we're making out. A motion to approve Delaware Engineering for formatting the current engineer plans for the U S D A grant not to exceed an amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Well, that's the one way. The other way was, um, it depends.
They, they wanted to go with a lesser way.
No, I'm sure they do, but it depends on what R C A can do and not do. So, yeah, I gave it to you. Uh, I, if you say not to exceed twelve thousand, then you're only going with, you're not only moving the one way, not the other way.
What is the suggestion?
Not to exceed thirty thousand. However, the gain has to be much greater than thirty thousand. In other words, if we can get a, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for thirty thousand, that makes sense, but.
I'm just trying to figure out how to word this to.
Oh.
Make it beneficial. So a motion to uh approve payment not to exceed thirty thousand dollars to Delaware Engineering for reformatting uh the.
U S D A.
For the U S D A grant. Right.
Provided that the.
We'll leave it that way and the committee, the sewer water committee can make the decision to go forward unless they know.
Yeah, exactly.
And then they can make recommendations. Okay. Have that in the form of a motion not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for the Delaware Engineering that you're about. Yes, I'll say. Any further comment? Questions? Judge.
Um, we are not, we are simply creating the possibility.
Correct.
That is.
It'll still go through the committee, the water and sewer committee. Um, I don't, the motion, I have a second, all in favor? I propose, um, parking committee.
Wait.
Did you?
Did you want to R C A to, to make a motion to allow R C A to apply for U S D A grant?
Okay, I'm making motion, um, for R C A to apply on behalf of the Water District for grant funding for our current project.
U S D A.
U S D A grant. U S D A project, through the U S D A.
Including, right, that's better.
Um, I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Parking committee? I spoke to Bruce about having a meeting and we couldn't agree in June. He's not here now, I can't talk to him. Um, I think that Mike's suggestion about informing the public about this parking lot is, is good and it's, it's, it's a quick, it's a low hanging fruit, my favorite kind. And I, I had in my mind on a sort of social media uh little vignette to inform people about that. It's gonna rhyme, it's gonna have a picture. And uh, you know, I, because I think probably have to be people who go to these restaurants, learn about them from Instagram and whatever. So I think if we can get the, to get the restaurants and, you know, we can do it on such a reading part of the process. There, yes. So that's a free, you know, picking up low hanging fruit. When Bruce comes back, we'll talk about having a meeting. Probably, I think the wise thing to do might be to see how things play out and have a meeting after Labor Day, but we'll see how it goes. So I can talk with the county and get them to get an additional parking sign. Um, to get Don to hang that down for the old parking, remember that old black and white parking lot? To be able to put it there where it's not going to obstruct traffic coming out. Um, it'll be on the side of the post office and it'll just be additional, it'll be public parking, additional bridge street. Right. And, and. At town hall, you know, a landmark that they've got. Google Maps or Apple Maps, one of them. Literally, if you go from the town hall parking lot to, and I chose one grand just to the whatever, location, it's nine hundred feet. It says mostly flat, you know, so. Oh, it's not far. I have a, a demonstration of a bug in wheelchair that will shame people.
Yeah.
Um, there, there was a, a very good point made at the uh parks meeting yesterday that uh going up towards Bridge Street has kind of become a mishmash of temporary signs.
I did speak to that about contact. Um, you said you've gone several times, I just asked to move it back.
Well, and there are two Skinner's Bridge detours, detour signs there. So I, I don't.
But you said you weren't really going.
Okay, thank you.
And it was, you know, depending on how you went up. In the second car, you can see the sign, but if it's first car, who's the person's going to be, right? You're not seeing it.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
On the subject of public toilets on Main Street, um, I have talked to the D V A A and when they are open, anyone is allowed to use their public toilet and you're not, you're not required to make a purchase of any kind. And additionally, now that Two Queens is on Main Street, that building, the old Rasmussen Building, has a public toilet. It does not require you to be a patron of any of the um businesses as of today. I don't know what the future will bring, but over the entire weekend, it was open. And many people use that public toilet.
Is there any other new business?
Yeah, I don't know if I need to ask permission, but I'd like to um possibly go to the White Plains meeting, it's a water meeting and then, and Dave said they're going to discuss funding. Do I need permission from the board to go along? I, I'll have to have.
Only if you want to be reimbursed. Yeah, well, I'm ready to go to the, the meeting. In what, like what, which meeting is it?
Um, it's the Westchester Water something meeting and.
If you want to get reimbursed for your milestone sharing lunch.
Well, I might have um uh tuition too, so.
That's educational, things, but yes.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
But.
I didn't know if I had to do them in every question.
That's why we get the reimbursement, okay, much like we said to you, okay. When is that?
The fall.
Do you want to wait till you get a date? I may be.
Yeah, yeah, I, and I'm hoping my money can go.
This way at least we get thirty more days where you'll be nice to us. Is there any other new business? If there is not any other new business, I will open up public comments again. Then the items, if you wish, and we will start with the.
Of them. There is nobody on Zoom this time that has their hand raised, I understand.
We'll open it up to the floor. Yes, Star.
First of all, the only topics that I brought up in the first public comment that were not on the agenda were the two complaints about the broken A D A doors and the uh oh, the vendors on the deck. Uh, I'd like to ask the U S D A grants that are being applied for or considered, are those monies being sought to help defray the cost of the water and sewer infrastructure? Changes and improvements that have to be made and as a relief to the Black President?
That is correct.
And you have no idea how much this money might be for them?
That is correct.
Star, just one point about that as well. The Water District is larger than the Platts.
Okay, I'm not just saying.
Yeah, I understand, I understand your point.
Effective, I guess.
But just as point of education so that the misinformation doesn't continue.
It is larger than.
Okay, and just for your edification, um, the person I spoke to at the D V A A was Ariam and he absolutely categorically, he practically blanched when I said that people come in off the street. Absolutely not, no, no, no. We want people coming in here, of course, but we want them to spend money. They don't spend money and people who come in and pay, where's your bathroom are particularly obvious to him. So where that is not something that will come in. Bring all the children and come to me.
Is there any other public comments on the floor? Yes.
Um, so uh, I'm just thinking about the budget for the Little League Erie project. Um, and I just asked Leon, the latest that plans to complete none, right, Jane, is like end of September. So we're already in July. Um, we meet again August first.
Fifth.
Fifth, right? I don't know when the project would be approved. I'm just, I'm just thinking that if it doesn't happen for this fall, I would request that that budget allotment be, yeah, carried over for next year.
Um, in anticipation of our meeting on August fifth, perhaps if you could identify the trees and areas that you see as part of phase one, we'll have a more timely response.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you did to get us to the presentation.
Yes, I don't have a comment, but it's more of two announcements. Sure.
Hi, my name is Peter De Angeles, I'm the State Commander of the Sons of the American Legion. But I'd like to be put on the agenda for August thirteenth. Uh, we're gonna come and make a sizable donation to the Tuffton Youth Commission. Money I've been raising all year, traveling sixty-two counties and collecting debt for the Tuffton Youth Commission.
Wow.
I also would like to say we're having a, I'm the animal control officer for the town of Tuffton also. And we're having a River Fest. I'm gonna have a table, an education table with flyers and stuff and goodie bags. And stop by and say hello, that's all. Thanks.
Don't miss the dog parade.
Tell me about.
Is there any other comment from the floor? Word comment. Don't miss the dog parade. Ten o'clock, the morning of the River Fest.
Is the August first meeting?
Okay, I don't usually have word comments, but I would like to take this time to thank the sewer and water committee and the deputy supervisor as part of that for the work that they do. Um, it would almost seem with some of our public comment that nothing is being done in order to assist those in the district that are being most affected by these higher rates and these uh repairs that need to come on. And uh, I think that could, is really couldn't be farther from the truth because I think we've got a committee that is very involved uh and works very hard in putting today with uh Kevin and Jane meeting with R C A. So a lot of time goes in it and I believe that this board is doing its due diligence in attempting to find the money. Um, and I, I believe it's just a good service to keep hearing that. Comments almost sound like you're, so that's my word comment to the board, to the work that they do.
Thank you.
No. But thank you.
Um, I also have one comment, um, regarding the pavilion, some of the language today seems as though the situation is either not being fully. The situation is either not being fully reported upon or moving forward. Without votes or due diligence, and that is not how I am experiencing the situation. If anything, I am surprised by how crippling the slow the resolution. Of this open wound has been. So, um. While everyone. Is entitled to their own perception and opinions of what is going on. I just wanted to make sure that while we're all together, we are discussing the fact that nothing in my mind. Has advanced other than the fact that we are trying to look at using the job for, uh, to make it more affordable. To get the data from which we will eventually vote to make a decision. That's my experience of it. Thank you.
Um, there's no further.
I just, I just wanted. Maybe this is in the TMI category, but I want to. Appreciate Supervisor Johnson, who's under the weather, running a good meeting. Appreciate that.
Uh, next meeting will be our worst, hopefully.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
I. Thank you for coming and attending. Stay cool.